I have all the folks signed up. Mr. Simon Polakowski.
Mr. Council President, Council. I wish to open my last council meeting about the matter of Mary Han and the proposal paying the boys for the turkeys. I read the complaint that was filed by Mrs. Han by the Han family order. I found it all that to be true or almost true to be incredible in the way our police department acted during the investigation of Miss Han's death. Many years ago, a friend of mine found a young woman hanging in the Boski. My friend, when he approached the body of this young woman hanging from the tree, carefully traced his steps back from her. Then, this is before cell phones, went to his house nearby and had the people call the police. I asked my friend, "How did our police department act?" He goes, "My friend was old enough." He said, "It reminded me of the Keystone Cops." But reading about Miss Han's investigation, this wasn't the Keystone Cops. This was criminal investigation. And just the outbreak is as lay on there, it's an embarrassment. I don't consider our city any different from any other city. I don't consider our city any worse or any better. I just live here. I come down here as a concerned citizen. I believe that this matter has to be addressed. And I recommend that all of you read the deposition at the time what they filed because it's incredible. I find it really incredible. I read it, it was like forty-some odd pages. Also, I liked the wish list administration, very sympathetic person, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council. Mr. Don Schrader. Let me call two other names so you know who you're up next. Tony Verard and Mike Alvez.
Do most college graduates live more wisely than minimum wage workers who never went to high school? Do most college graduates travel less, pollute less, cause less global climate change? Do most college graduates pay less federal income tax for war? Do most college graduates consume less and live more simply and fairly in our world family of over seven billion people? Do most college graduates take strong public stance against U.S. greed and wars? Do most graduate, college graduates choose jobs that help more than harm? When Gandhi was asked what worried him most, he replied, "The hardness of heart of the Albert Einstein said, "More and more, I have come to value charity and love of others above everything else." All our lauded technological progress, our very civilization, is like an axe in the hand of a pathological criminal." Gandhi said, "Be the change you want to see in the world." I was a college dropout, but in the university of life, I constantly collect wisdom on how to live and how not to live. I collect wisdom to live it every day.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Gandhi also said, when asked what he thought of Western civilization, he said it would be a good idea. Tony Verard.
Thank you. The cries across the nation are justified. Hands up, don't shoot doesn't mean anything to the lawless, crooked, corrupt, corporate-owned, renegade police department like APD. We all know that despite your hands being up, killer cops will shoot anyway. As for the cries, "I can't breathe," well, I certainly can't breathe when the Department of Justice keeps ramming this worthless, bogus, do-nothing consent decree down my throat as the DOJ continues to spit in the faces of the people who demand justice. The killer cops will not walk. They will not retire. They will not double dip. Things are coming together slowly, but my friend said it best at the news conference last week after the DOJ meeting. The DOJ refuses to acknowledge that quote, "These cops are getting away with murder." The DOJ continues to spit in their face and all law enforcement continues their uncontrolled reign of judicial terrorism. Next year will be different, but before I finish this speech, I will say again to the DOJ and to the rest of the godless, lawless regime of cops who can't do the right thing for the people. For the record again, you should all be arrested for high treason and crimes against humanity. You have betrayed your oath of office and the people of the United States. From this day forward, I pledge to stop for no cop. Lawlessness will be dealt with by the people. I do not consent, DOJ. The people, the people's grand jury will intervene as our whole damn system is broke. Get it yet? No justice, no peace.
Thank you. Mike Alvez, followed by Joe Green and Reverend Trey Hammond. Mr. Alvez. He's not here. Joe Green, Reverend Trey Hammond, and Catherine Freyer. Welcome, sir.
Mr. President, Council members, good evening. Racism is deeply rooted in America. Recent words of President Barack Obama, his older brother, St. Martin de Portis, can teach President Obama how to walk on water. To pray for the immortal souls of those loved ones that have been killed or died of natural causes is an act of wisdom. The following are words of Archbishop Michael J. Sheehan at an annual October Roseberry rally held at Isotos Park. In the new millennium, tragedies are many. The greatest tragedy is for a person to lose their immortal soul. Archbishop Sheehan saved my life at a past December twelve annual Our Lady of Wollapalooza community procession held in South Broadway that I was filming. The Archbishop's executive assistant, Dolores Cordova, is also aware of the incident. "I can't breathe, I can't breathe." That was my phrase as I struggled with anxiety to breathe. I was dying. Realizing that, I said, "Lord, have mercy on my soul." It was then Archbishop gave me his precious blessing and I was healed immediately. My father, Joe M. Greens, named his honor at St. Francis Xavier Church in Albuquerque. He made a prediction Albuquerque shall become known as Miracle City at the time I was unaware that his son would become involved in a remarkable situation. EWTN miracles have happened in Albuquerque. That television network is a gift from the Duke City and world. May peace prevail on earth. New model of the rural horror survivors, Ray Baker President. Have a pleasant, extort Christmas and may the New Year be extornate, filled with good works. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reverend Trey Hammond, Alvez, Catherine Freyer, and Sylvia Delangelo.
Good morning, gardeners, city councilors. My name is Trey Hammond. I'm the pastor of La Mesa Presbyterian Church and co-chair of Albuquerque Interfaith. Albuquerque Interfaith was very much involved in the Plangrove strategy. I'm here to speak to the facility fee conversation tonight. One of the fundamental building blocks of the Plangrove strategy that was passed in 2006 was to facilitate concurrent planning between the city and APS. So as developments took place on the west side, there was needed infrastructure to provide good educational facilities. At the time of their passage, there was broad interest by the public and many advocacy groups to see this kind of concurrent planning take place, and Albuquerque Interfaith was one of those. At the time of pass, most of the growth that was taking place on the west side, and it was anticipated most of those expenditures would happen there to enhance west side schools, but the recession changed the way growth took place in the city. So the monies are to be invested in the clusters where the permits have been granted, and so that every cluster has received monies from the facility fee fund, and all of your districts have seen some of those investments. On the west side, funds have been used to buy twenty-one portables for the Adolfo Anaya Elementary School, and buses were purchased for Trisco Heritage to run a double schedule. We urge the council to continue its commitment to this concurrent planning and to not change this ordinance at which will effectively gut the facility fees. If there are some concerns about the way those funds are being used, I would recommend setting up a process of accountability along with APS, but we would urge you to not change the ordinance and continue to allow those facility fees to help our schools. Thank you very much.
Reverend Hammond, if you have a second. I just wanted to ask, what do you mean by if the funds or the fees are not being spent correctly?
I think there's been some concern about the, the people weren't as aware how the money was being spent. The thing about this fund is that the facility fee fund, unlike the master capital plan, master capital planning monies, those are very long-term investments. This fund allows a little bit more flexibility for doing something needed, like if it looks like a school needs to run a double schedule, buses could be leased and that schedule could be facilitated within a short framework of time versus a long framework of time. The capital master plan works on that long calendar. These facility fees work on a shorter calendar and give more flexibility.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Freyer, followed by Sylvia Delangelo and Pat Neminski.
Good evening. My name is Katrin Freyer. I'm also a leader in Albuquerque Interfaith, and I also want to speak to the APS facilities. These fees are more flexible than the capital master plan, and while they might not be enough to be used for capital, they have been going into the classroom to use as educational support and for learning investments. There has been advancements in every cluster which represents the districts that they serve. There may need to be more conversations about the strategy of how to spend the expenditures, but the money that's been there has been impactful. So I urge you, do not dismantle this fee. Keep the conversation going, please.
Thank you, Ms. Freyer. Sylvia Delangelo, followed by Ted Neminski, Kenneth Ellis.
My African-American brothers in New York City Ferguson in Albuquerque, like innocent Woodrow Fenton Vietnam Vet, can't breathe. I can't breathe since his marriage to office, nor can anyone else breathe. I've been threatened by chief shots, and someday I will breathe, and my wife wears it. As was said, even if your hands are raised up, it doesn't make any difference. She'll get shot in the back. I know we have a bunch of armed officers at chief's, armed, ready to shoot anyone like the cops. And what I'll do is I'll raise my hand and hope they don't shoot me.
Thank you, Delangelo. Your time's up. Ted Neminski, followed by Kenneth Ellis and Norman Everett.
First, Donna, I got some Christmas special delivery to crunches. My time running down.
Mr. Neminski, you need to get started.
Oh, just reset.
It has been reset. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. My name Ted, Ted Neminski. Well, here is three pages. One page, black and white, American liberty union. Well, something wrong, don't matter. Just look at second page, which is power, which is United States flag and corporation flag, which is now, let's go to read it, "To everyone in home." It is American liberty law. This is all, two governments, two flags. First originated and constitutional ratified by the people. A government of the people, by the people, for the people. Well, I don't have much time. Let's go to, here is flag, which represent red, white, and blue, red, yes, etc., etc. Now, another flag, corporation flag, which is never been adopted by, excuse me, never been ratified or adopted by the people. This is government of the corporation, by corporation and for the corporation through the law.
Take that, Mike. Turn. Thank you, Mr. Neminski. Kenneth Ellis, Norman Everett, and Mike Swick. Mr. Ellis.
Good evening, councilor. Congratulations, Mr. Gardenio, on your presidency here. I'm here to declare my sovereign citizenship. I am now declaring myself as a sovereign citizen. I give you all a copy of this that's up there, and basically, this is all United States Supreme Court case law, and the document speaks for itself. You know, it's a sad state that we're in right now. I really hope that you folks can get this right and set the example for the rest of the country. You guys have the most power as anyone in this city. You've got more power than America collectively. We really, really need to have accountability. We really, really need to have as a minimum these officers have a pre-trial or preliminary hearing, mediation, something. Somehow or another, we've got to bring the parties that are involved in these situations together and determine if there should be further action. I plan on spending a lot of time in Santa Fe the next year or two. We've got to get some legislation changed. You folks are tasked with a heck of a project, so thoughts and prayers will be with all of you. So let's try to make this right, try to, try to make it right for our kids and our grandkids in the future. But as I said, starting out, I am a sovereign citizen. Look it up.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Norman Everett, followed by Mike Swick, and last speaker is Julie Baca.
Mr. President, I'd like to start out with a question and an answer. Why did the chicken cross the road in New Mexico? The chicken, I don't know if she crossed the road yet, and though she's been thinking about crossing the road, but whether she crosses the road, I don't think the chickens to blame. I mean, who had to go put the road there anyway? Maybe you should come back and ask me again, how come the chicken crossed the road tomorrow?
So ask, go ahead.
So the thing about it is, in New Mexico, I go up here tomorrow, we're always thinking about tomorrow, if we can put it off till then. There's things that come up and we can't put them off anymore, the rest to take care of. The question is, the chicken, why does it want to cross the road? Why do we want to keep it from crossing the road? Maybe we need to put up a fence. Do we put up the fence to keep the chicken off the road, or do we put up the fence to protect the chicken from getting on the road? And if we put up the fence to protect the chicken, but we don't realize why does the chicken want to cross the road? Maybe the chicken is not thinking what it needs on that side of the road, and it needs to go to the other side. Maybe the other sides know better, but the chicken doesn't know, and then it wants to cross the road again. But then to put up a fence, we need to see that the chicken is taken care of, the chicken has what it needs on its side of the road. The point is, we need to make both sides of the road good. We can't make the world a better place by making it worse for one person. We have to make the world a better place for everyone. And that includes for our police department. And lastly, I didn't know I could bring visual aids. If I had, I would have got the chicken.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Mike Swick, followed by Julie Baca.
Sorry, I ran a demo for you. Good evening, councilors. Last month, Thanksgiving Day, my family and I took our dogs to the Crowls Boski for dinner. When we returned to our vehicles parked on the narrow roadside along the ditch, we found our tragic scene. An ATG rider had been illegally riding on the ditch and he flipped. He was prone on the ground, and the EMT was applying CPR vigorously. We also noticed that our vehicles were hemmed in by the several rescue vehicles on the narrow road. The Crowls policeman in charge, an officer Tom, incidentally, waved this away from what he described as a crime scene as the victim was faked. Young, wanting to interfere, he trekked back into Boski and waited for an all clear. Thirty minutes passed, an hour, two hours, and finally, four hours later, we were allowed into the area. By this time, we were quite anxious to make our Thanksgiving commitments. My son was quite upset that we couldn't get to our vehicles. I assured him that the police were doing their job in securing the scene while their investigation was carried out, even though it was obvious when it happened. When we at last left the scene, I recall the Mary Han case and the mishap of that investigation with which you were all familiar. I wondered how such a travesty could happen for a well-known civil rights lawyer and prominent citizen. This unfortunate victim was just a twenty-eight-year-old man who made a fatal mistake, but the proper procedures were carried out. I guess he had no incriminating evidence on high-level city employees. I'm wondering if there are any of those here today, shame on them.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Now, last speaker, Julie Baca. Welcome, Julie.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the city council. Again, my name's Julie Baca, and I'm the president of the National Hispanic Cultural Center Foundation. And as most of you may or may not know, I submitted my resignation last week, which was very, very hard for me to do because I really love my job and I'm very proud of what I do. And it was mostly due to my family's situation. My dad's very ill with Parkinson's. But I just wanted to thank you all, really from the bottom of my heart, for your support. As you know, two years ago, I walked into a challenge, but it wasn't just me, it was all of us, and we all took it seriously, and we worked together, and it worked. We're at a really, the foundation is at a really, really good starting point to be able to, their work to becoming healthy, healthier and sustainable, and to, we're ready to fulfill our mission, and that's to support the programs of the center. So I just, I didn't want to leave without coming before you and expressing my appreciation to everyone of you for everything. The mayor, Betty Ubeda, thank you so much, and just for all the support from the donors and just everyone that worked with us. I really truly appreciate it, and we could not have done it without your support. Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. We have statements from the other councilors. Councilman Bennett.
Ms. Baca, I know that you took over the chairmanship at a difficult time, and I really want to commend you for the job you've done, and, you know, hopefully love a great transition, but the center is such a great, great place, and anybody who's never been there and, for instance, gone to a concert at the theater, which is just terrific, I mean, I've been told by people in the industry that it's one of the best acoustic venues in the state of New Mexico, and it's just a great place to hear a concert. And just the whole campus, I mean, it's a masterpiece by one of our most famous architects, I guess, Monica. And I'm very proud to have it in the district. And I also just want to say, my father suffered from Parkinson's, so our prayers would be as you look to that.
Thank you, Councilor Bennett. Councilman Bennett.
Ms. Baca, I just want to say, I was really disappointed to hear your resignation. I just want to reiterate what Councilman Bennett was saying, that you did a tremendous job, knowing the obstacles that you had when you went in there, and I think you're going to be sort of, sorry, Ms. Baca.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Sanchez.
Mr. President, I also want to echo what Councilman Bennett and Councilman Penney just said. You know, it's difficult to see you leave that position because in the last two years, you've done a tremendous job in the position you're in, but I know that the foundation that you've now left the foundation in is in really good hands with your knowledge, your understanding, and compassion for the institution. And as Councilman Bennett stayed at the campus there, has come a long way, and because of your institutional knowledge and the work you did with the county, I think it's in really solid footing to move forward in the future. And again, I know it's with your father being ill, but it's got the right person there for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Julie, again.
Just thank you for allowing, for allowing me to speak, and like they say, it was all of us that did it, and we could have done it if we didn't have each other. So thank you all very, very much.
And I also say sorry about your father's illness, but we're with you, and again, he's hardly missed it, and I wish I could think of something real one to say, but I'll just echo what he said.
Thank you.
I'm going to be moving an item on the agenda to this one. Item fifteen under the list. Here is the mayor's Here is the mayor's detailed message. Councilwoman Pena, uh, will it be spoken or?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I'll definitely give it a shot. Um, this is EC, um, EC two eighteen. And this is amending chapter two, our fully abandoned, our code A nineteen eighty-four city budget to allow for the carryover of general fund reserves into subsequent years when the reserve related to salary increases or equivalent benefits for employees covered under collective bargaining units. As you know, last, um, last council meeting, I went into this whole, um, discussion and, and tried to garner the support of the rest of the council on the wrong field. So this is the right one now without going into the whole discussion. I would just urge your support.
Thank you, Councilor. And if you could play that tape, we would have both of our soliloquies. Uh, any other reactions? If not, uh, we'll have a vote now on EC fourteen two eighteen, detailed message. Um, I move to override. Those who favor say yes, raise your hand.
Yes.